And if you have Ms. Carmack lead us in the pledge of allegiance and Mr. Williams do the invocation. Be a great.
The flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, thank you for another beautiful day in Powhatan County and all the many blessings we enjoy. And tonight, we pray that you will look after the people in Ukraine and help them any way you can to relieve their suffering and what they're going through right now. Amen.
Amen. Are there any requests to postpone agenda items, additions, deletions, or changes in the order of the presentation? Not hearing any. Can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? County Administrator, updates?
No updates tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, wonderful. We'll just move right along. We'll open up the public comment period at this time. You have like to address the board. You have three minutes to speak as an individual, up to five minutes. If you're representing a group, and there will be a public hearing right after this if you're looking to speak on the budget issue. Floor is now open.
Mike Oliver, forty-three, seventy-two, three, Bridge Road. Mr. Chair, members of the board. What I'm speaking to Shannon to speak about tonight is a comment made in the hearing last night. I have come to a number of meetings recently, and I hear words embarrassed, disgusting, mocking of members of the board. I heard somebody in this room attack the county administration for quote renting space to the NAACP. I hope everybody in the room was embarrassed and disgusted with that comment as I think.
Thank you, sir. Not seeing anyone else. Do we have anyone on Zoom, Mr. Smith?
Zoom is clear, Mr. Chair.
We'll close the public comment period. We'll open up the public hearing for the fiscal year 2023 operating budget. So the public hearing is now open. If you'd like to speak on that, come right on down and take three minutes for an individual and five minutes for a group.
Good evening. Steven Brown, thirty-four, ninety-two, Richard's Run, Powhatan, Virginia, District Three. Oh, I know this meeting is about the budget. I've been involved with a few budgets, nothing as big as y'all getting ready to deal with. But it's mighty hard to do a budget if you don't have a rough idea how much money you have coming in. It's pretty dang on difficult. Oh, and I please ask again. Take your time. We ain't got to rush. Mr. Cox, I think we had to June thirtieth to get this thing right. And it would be nice to see us get something right here. Oh, it's been going a little bit rough for the county here in the last month or so, maybe longer. But, you know, like I said, please find the waste. So we all run on that. Please stand by what you're saying. There's waste there to be found. If y'all need help with that, I'm not an expert, but I'd be gladly willing to help. I know quite a few other people will. I I hope y'all seeing more than what the public's seeing far as a posed budget, or as line item and stuff like that. I pray to God y'all. I know the few budgets I've been involved with. Normally, your department heads or your different groups send you their wish list around you want to call everybody. Always ask more than what they need normally. If they're smart, they normally do. And then it's up to y'all to hopefully trim that down. Yeah, I have a problem paying taxes. I gladly pay my taxes, but find the ways. That's all I'm asking, please. I know y'all got a tough job. Y'all probably sitting up and wondering now why in the devil y'all sitting up there? And I couldn't blame you one bit. I know I give y'all hell. That's my nature. But tonight, please, just think about what y'all are doing. Take your time. I know it seems like it's a big rush to get it done, and maybe it is. But please, just step back, take a breath, and think about what you're doing. You know, I hope we can get it advertised in the Powhatan today and places like that because nobody reads any of the papers. I don't know how many people reached Powhatan today, but please just try to get it right this time. So that nobody is, gentlemen, state people that are disgusted, embarrassed, and all that. Just please try to get it right this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
David Anderson, twenty-three, sixty-six, Bell Crest Circle, Powhatan. Just like to start off, I know last night was, you got a lot of negative feedback, I'll call it, and it's probably rightly deserved, in my opinion. But I think there's some bright spots as well. So I'd just like to start off. I seen a couple of quick thank yous. I'd like to thank the staff and the board for all the time that you put into the budget. I know it's a tremendous lift. And I just want to say thank you for all your effort. Secondly, I'd like to thank Mr. Williams for bringing up the whole issue behind the effective tax rate and digging into the issue and finding out we were not doing it correctly. I think by the fact that that led to the meeting last night. And you saw we had a good turnout, that it was an effective thing to do, and I thank you for that. And then lastly, I'd like to thank Mr. Smith. A few weeks ago, he reached out to me. I made some comments following a budget workshop that were somewhat critical, I guess you would say. And he proactively reached out to me and explained some things to me. He didn't have to do that. It was a very Powhatan thing to do, and I appreciate it. I don't have any comments about the specific budget tonight, but I would like to just make a couple of comments real quickly about the budget process. I would strongly urge you, as soon as you pass a budget in a couple of weeks, is that you have a workshop of some type where you sit down and say, what did we do right about the budget? What didn't we do so right? And what are we going to do differently next year? Because the way I look at the budget is, it's not just something that happens two or three months before you advertise it, and we come down here to approve it and vote on it. But it's really an all-year-long process. It's not just an event. And I think that the workshop meetings I attended, there was a lot of focus on the numbers. And I don't think there was nearly enough focus upfront to prepare the ground, if you will, to make sure you got numbers that you wanted to get or that the county deserves. I would recommend that you spend a lot more time as a board thinking about the type of assumptions or guidance do you want to give staff as they prepare the budget. I would also ask you to think about what are the key performance indicators for the county. It helps you decide if you're going to put money somewhere and you know you're going to get a certain outcome. And you can look back and say, this is the outcome we got or we expect to get. You can feel better about putting money behind it if you know you're going to get historically a certain output. And then lastly, I would strongly urge you that if you really have some long-range items you want to address. I know the budget for the school has been mentioned multiple times by Mr. Cox and Mr. Pyerly. That you gotta start, you gotta hold somebody accountable, assign them to look into analyzing what's going on, and they need to start putting strategies together now for next year's budget. It takes a long time to be creative and start whacking away and getting that curve to bend down, and somebody needs to start taking a look at it now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. One person on Zoom, Mr. Chair.
All right. Ms. Weir, if you could take your line off mute, we're ready for you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Debbie Weir, fifteen oh one, Page Row. I would like to speak about this year's county budget. I usually don't comment on the budget because I feel that the board has done their due diligence at arriving at the best budget possible for the needs of the county and its citizens. However, this year, I don't feel that way. For one, the board only advertised for one week for this budget public hearing, not two. I remember in the past, a lot of more detail in the budget advertisement than was given this year. On something as important as the county budget, I would have thought it would have been given the same advertising priority as the tax rate, but it wasn't. The fact that the budget increased by ten point six percent is not surprising, given it fits perfectly with the increase in our assessments. The ten point six percent rate is well above the rate of inflation and a lot more than anyone's retirement cola or employment salary increase was this year. It was mentioned by a member of the board that everyone has a budget and they need to spend within their budget. As a taxpayer, it's a little hard to budget when our income stays the same or increases by a very small percentage. But the counties increase their budget by a much higher percentage. When that happens, the taxpayer is forced to cut items within their household budget to compensate for the county's overzealous increase. I know the county has to increase their budget each year because their costs do go up too. However, I think an overall budget increase of three, four, or at the most five percent is more in line rather than the ten point six total budget or the nine point eight percent without transfers figure. One cut that is easily spotted is the start of a tourism fund this year. I watched the majority of budget workshops. I don't remember seeing this slide item ever mentioned or being discussed. Until I hear the discussion or see the workshop, I'm not sold that it is a necessary item that needs to be in the county's budget, especially this year. I hope you, the board, have received more detail and accurate detail of all the aligned items, especially the really big items like the grant fund law library that increased by two point six million. Capital Projects Fund, which was up three point five million. In closing, all of these figures are much bigger numbers than we're used to. In the past, we are depending on the board to look at the question and question hard the figures that you've been given and not accept them as being accurate or necessary expenditures. Please look to reduce this advertised budget by four to six percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weir. Have anyone else, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir. Zoom is clear.
Seeing anyone else, we'll close the public comment period. Board members, floor is open. Questions, comments regarding the budget?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
Mr. Smith, can you put up the slide with the employees, the nine proposed employees? Do you mind putting that up? Or you may not have that handy.
I don't know if I have that. Which slide?
The one with the positions, the nine positions we're adding.
I've got it. We'll cover that.
Oh, okay.
I've got it. We'll put it up in just a minute.
Okay, good, because I wanted to talk about that. The convenience.
I have the slide.
Okay, perfect. The convenience center, um, realistically, I don't think we need those positions for this fiscal year. I think the odds are probably not going to be super great that we're going to have that up and running this year. So I'm thinking, you know, what my colleagues would think about eliminating those three positions.
Ms. Carmack, you want me to put the slide up?
Yeah. Okay, perfect. There it is.
There we go.
Ms. Carmack, I think we've got right now four months of the position, so that means we would anticipate the convenience center opening in March of twenty-three, the last four months of the year. So that's all we've got budget. Now, you might say the four months, we might not make it by March twenty-three.
We may not make it, because I was gonna say, there's no way.
It's not a full year salary in there, so.
Um, the other thing I would like to find out, um, the firefighters, is there any way we could eliminate? I know you hire three because you have the chefs, but could they make do with two and perhaps not use one for a shift where they have more volunteers? That's another thing I would like to look at. Help, the communications officer, help me understand what that is.
That is, that's the extra position, so we round out the final shift of our emergency nine-one-one.
That's right. Okay, I forgot about that. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Goodman's here tonight. If we, you know, Taylor, if you've got any feedback that you'd like to get provided, Ms. Carmack, on the, on the two versus three positions. Or would you like to just, we'd be glad to gather all the answers to these questions and come back to you.
Yeah, that would be great.
Either way you want to handle that, so.
Taylor Goodman, Deputy Chief, Powhatan Fire Rescue. The reason that the three positions were asked for is that we operate in three twenty-four hour shifts. And so what it allows is a balance because those positions will replace our contracted employees that we're using now. And so what it would do is actually allow that same exact number of now compensated employees to, instead of being contracted, those three positions would simply be filled by our personnel.
Okay, yeah, I remember that from that, but I didn't know if you could, you know, somehow compensate, but.
No, we want to keep those as full-time positions. We do, of course, have some part-time employees. And but we want them to fill either positions out in the western part of the county, which are dedicated part-time positions that are always part-time. And only have to use them on that particular ambulance when we may have a sick out or call out or something like that where we could backfill those positions with the part-time.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Um, the deputy clerk for the commissioner revenue, he is here. I'm assuming we're probably going to need to put that back in.
I think so. We talked with Commissioner Jamie, please come up. He's got the four positions from the assessment office. I'm not sure that he needs five. I'll let him answer that.
So the short answer is I can't give it up yet. I need to get through this transition, but I foresee that going away next year. Um, we need to get through this land book.
Okay. So what?
That was a long-term plan in the beginning last year that I offered you. Um, but I need to get through this land book. And I mean, right now, it's vacant. You're not spending any money on it.
Right.
And if we make it through this, then it will be on the table to go away.
Okay. And the, now that it's transferred back over to you, how will that look with the budget, money in the budget? Will it be, you know, the exact same amount, but just now shifted over to him? How's that going to look?
I think we'll probably depend on how Mr. Timberlake fills the positions. If he has levels he fills them at, we don't know that right now. You're still.
Correct. So two of them have already been filled at less than we were spending. I got two more to go.
Yeah, so once he fills those two positions, we should have some extra money, we hope, in the salary budget in the assessor's office that we could either move or just, it'll be extra money a year in fiscal year twenty-three.
Absolutely.
Okay, but the one question is, you know, do we have the fifth position now in the budget that we fill and fund? And how does that play out? If, you know, does he, Jamie, do you need that position for six months or for a year? Or is it all just one big five-person effort, you know?
Right. So and I think the answer is it'll be a four-person effort after we get through this. I need to get through this and evaluate where we are, but the the long-term plan is that that position goes away because a bunch of the duties that we currently do in my office now with the transfers and all that, that person started yesterday and are hitting the ground running. So as soon as she is comfortable and comfortable in Keystone, this position will be available to do away with.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, are you finished? Before we leave that slide, Holly, could you leave that slide up there? Because I had some questions about it also. First, the purchasing agent, we don't have an MOU, Mr. Smith, I believe you told us, with the schools. So I would ask that you remove that until we have an MOU with the schools, or if you can demonstrate that we have enough work to keep it busy on the county side. Okay, but I'm guessing we need the schools to make it really work. But I'd rather have, I'd rather have that, I'd rather come back and add that job if we have an MOU rather than having it hang out there. I'm with Mrs. Carmack on the convenience center. I don't want to add three full-time positions for a year, so however we make that a reality in the numbers makes sense to me. As far as Mr. Timberlake, in your budget book, if you have it with you, page thirty-five, talks about the assessor's office, and it also talks about, further on, talks about Mr. Timberlake's office. I'd like to see, I understand the difficulties of getting it just right, but for this budget, I would really like to see those two combined so they know what kind of numbers we're looking at and what kind of positions.
Not a problem.
The so, you know, so the assessor's office gets straightened out, however that is, the purchasing agent, I have some problems with, since same comments that Mrs. Carmack, convenience center.
Let me, Mr. Cox, if you don't mind, with the purchasing agent, we, Ms. Schubert and I were talking today. That position, we know we have a need in general government, and we hope it, and the school board is, the school board staff has indicated that there might be a need there, but we have not got an MOU, just as you said. We did, Ms. Schubert and I did talk about, we could possibly go with, if we determine we can't fill forty hours on the general government side, a part-time position to, you know, qualified part-time person for two, three days a week as opposed to a full-time person, but, you know.
For me, it's just a question of having, having the work. If it's part-time works, that's fine with.
We are concerned about that too. About the school board, we're worried about whether we have forty hours a week on purchasing.
And you're probably not going to know till the new superintendent shows up. Understand that. Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Oh, absolutely. Go ahead.
Holly, could you put up the folder that has school budget? Right, and put up, put up the one that says five percent. I believe it's number one.
Yes.
This is a slide that Mr. Smith prepared that shows us the cost of five percent raises and then how much money we get back. So let's focus just on the school side here if we could. It says that on the school side, it's going to cost a million eight six seven and that they're going to get six hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars back from the state. Okay, so that's the outgo and the income. Now, could we go to the next, next item, please, Holly? This is the school's revenue and expenditure chart. Now, we need to blow that up and get zero in on that, where I highlighted it in blue. First of all, the schools say that the cost of the five percent salary is a hundred and ninety, a hundred ninety-nine, ninety-one thousand is a hundred and twenty-four thousand difference, so we need to reconcile it, okay? Whatever it is.
One point nine.
One mill.
One point nine mill.
One point nine mill.
Yeah. Now, what's interesting is that's where, that's where the expenditures start. Above it, it talks about total revenue changes. And they don't show the revenue changes of almost seven hundred thousand dollars coming back in. So what I want to know is, where is, you know, is that in their budget, okay? And where is it in their budget so that the revenue coming back in? Because if not, that's almost seven hundred thousand dollars that we need to talk seriously about.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. And I'll find out the difference on the million nine ninety-one. It might be updated numbers since we talked to them a month ago. But the, the revenue numbers, I'm pretty comfortable, are the numbers straight off the state's revenue report that they provide to school boards. So their school revenues do include the five percent bump that the state is showing on their website.
But this doesn't, when this talks about, okay, changes, and he's very meticulous about the changes in revenue. And it doesn't show the change in the revenue coming back in. I understand what it's supposed to do. Okay, but line items for revenue are shown there, okay? You know, state based on Governor Northern proposed, well, that's talking about the, you know, building fund. So I just want to know, I want to confirm that it is, and I want to know where it is.
It's that sixty-four thousand dollar number that you see there in the middle of that page is the six, seven hundred thousand embedded in that number. It would be minus six hundred thousand dollars. That's, when we look at the state website, we'll see a sixty-four thousand dollar increase in state funding and embedded in that seven, sixty-four thousand is going to be your seven hundred thousand dollars.
I'd just like to see it.
I'll show it. We'll get that for you.
The that's it for this. No, the other thing I would like, and I can't find it anywhere, is the cost of health benefits for retirees. I want, I want to know that number because I'm not going to support that number as part of the transfer.
I have seen that number, so we can get that for you.
Okay. I had last year's, but I can't find the one anywhere this year. So if we could get that number and talk about.
Yeah, sure.
Holly, if we could go to now the county budget. Followed us as county budget. Same thing again. You just saw this a minute ago. Now we're looking at the county side where it's seven hundred and seventy thousand, and we get two hundred and twenty-one thousand back. Now, could we go to the next item, item number two in that folder? This is a breakdown of the contingency fund, which is really what we're talking about. Okay, this says raises are six hundred thousand. So I'm looking once again to reconcile the numbers, whether this is just rounding or whatever, but to reconcile the numbers. And I want to know where the two hundred and twenty-one thousand of revenue is actually shown in our budget. That's what we're supposed to be getting back, okay? So same, 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 exact same questions we asked schools. And the other piece that I had about the county budget was the new positions which was gone over. Holly, we're through with you for the moment. Take a break. I would like, I have some questions about the budget that's actually in the budget book. So if you would go to tab two. And the first question is on page twenty-three. At the top, it shows you under general fund, personal property taxes, estimating that twenty twenty-one will be ten million, two hundred fifty thousand. Excuse me, I'm sorry, FY twenty-two will be adopted with ten million, three eighty, no real change, and not much of a change proposed for twenty-three. With the value of cars soaring, that seems to be a number that is probably understated. So, you know, that's a question. Should we look at that again? I believe Mr. Timberlake wrote us a a series of emails earlier this year, so I have some questions about that. Of course, finally, if you just come down, just under general property taxes, local sales tax indicates that we're going up eighteen point three percent. That's a pretty aggressive number. I realize we've had sales tax going up, you know, pretty significantly, but I'd ask you to take a look at that number and make sure you're, you're comfortable that it's that, that's, that's, that's a big continuation.
Yeah, I think, I think on that, I'll get you an answer on the personal property, but on the sales tax, I think we were a little too conservative in twenty-two, so I think what you're seeing is a, you know, is a comparison between our twenty-two budget adopted and the, so, and you, so the twenty-two numbers, one is a little low.
Twenty-two numbers light, okay?
Yeah, you see where our actual collections were in twenty-one. We were at four point five million in twenty-one, and a twenty-two budget, which, you know, is low.
So I guess the question, okay, I got that. I understand twenty-two is probably understated. So is the, is, does that mean that the percentage is wrong or that the, that the number for proposed twenty twenty-three is, is wrong?
I think our twenty-three number is our, our best estimate of where we're going to be in twenty-three.
Okay, and so.
I'm getting about the percentage because it's going to change. It's going to go down. Okay.
Oh, no, excuse me. I think the four eight's a good number for twenty-three, but you're comparing it to a conservative twenty-two. I think when you see twenty-two's numbers, the percentages go down. I know what you're saying.
Yeah, I think we're saying the same thing.
That percentage is going to go down when that twenty-two adopted goes up.
As long as, as long as the number, I could care less about the percentage.
Right. And down at the bottom, grants fund is going up two million dollars. What is that?
That is the CVTA.
Okay.
I'll need to jump in front of the budget office here, but I think that's what the main.
I mean, the transfer of, um.
We'll get, we'll get you that answer.
I'm taking the CVTA, but I'll confirm that.
If we could go to page twenty nine. Permits, fees and licenses. We've got a budget of a million one and a twenty three budget is nine hundred thousand. So. Do we need a permit center? Or we are, or is this going, you know, this doesn't sound like. And if it sounds right, then are we, are we overstaffed?
No, I don't think it does. I don't think we're overstaffed. Question is the, I'll, I'll check on the numbers. We did have, at the time the budget was originally prepared, we were doing some outside sourcing of. Planner view, we've gotten out of that, so our staffing is.
But that, wasn't that just for Casey's?
No, no, we, we made it available in order to get the backlog shortened. So quite, I, I bet you we've got some of the, the, those debits included in that forecast, but now we've caught up. We'll, I'll ask the budget office to look and see if we can be more aggressive on that projection. Okay, thank you.
Part of the reduction, and we can get some more information, but part of the reduction. Is due to Artistry Apartments, their permits finishing. So that was a lot of revenue in the past few years for Powhatan County.
Good point. The Artistry Apartments, permit fee revenues are now stopped, so that, that was a big bump. Thank you, Thomas.
All right. Page thirty.
She's got your grand answer, your two million dollar answer.
Okay. Just leave it on the table up here.
Part of that is, it's hard to show, but we're using. It's a transfer. On my revenue side, it's kind of a use of fund balance because we've already budgeted and appropriated. We'll get the other part of our American Rescue Plan Act money that will go for the broadband. So that's the biggest chunk of it, the two point five. But then also in that fund is our, a few grants. One of them is, or two of them are CSBG grants, the Community Services Block Grant that our social services runs. We moved that out of the general fund into this grants fund because it is solely grants based and it's only reimbursable. And it just isolates it a little bit better for reporting for the social services fund, so it wasn't shown that way last year. It was commingled in the general fund. And we also, some triad, I believe, was the other that we're budgeting for because we do get triad. Donations and grants each year for that program. So that's what the whole, the two million eight eighty two ninety three is.
I, I, we feel, okay, I don't know that I understand anymore. I understood your words, okay?
Biggest number you recognize, remember we had three million and twenty four that we approved for Fireflies Broadband. Five hundred of it was last year and two million five of it is, this is coming here, so that's the biggest piece of that, so.
Throw up the two point eight.
Two point two.
Two point five.
Broadband, okay.
Thank you.
I think I know the answer to this one, but I want to ask it anyway. On page thirty two. Expenditure summary, and I'm looking at finance going up a hundred and ten thousand dollars. That is the permit, that is the. Purchasing agent, is that what?
That would be a piece of that.
The assessment office. Is that part of the finance in this, okay, all right. On page thirty three. We haven't updated any of this. And we've made a lot of changes going along. A good example right there is the contingency fund is now a million nine, it's not a million seven. Can we get some of this updated? The contingent funds now, based on this, one million nine hundred and twenty four thousand is not one million seven twenty three.
I think we got an answer for that. I think we've got the million nine in, in the budget, so I wanted to get you an answer on that.
No, but I won't, I won't paper that. I'm looking at that, that looked like reality, not, I don't.
It has been updated, so the summaries we gave you in the packet on April eighteenth is not in this much detail, but I can get you the, the detail that supports that.
So the million nine that he has on his worksheet is the contingency number.
No, I understand it's in the.
He just wants the detail.
I'm looking at the details and now I'm in, in cut and paste territory and I'm not very good at.
Okay.
No problem.
We've already talked about the assessor's office. Page fifty six. Interesting anomaly. Mr. Woods here, so he'll be able to help us. Fifty six is information technology. And you look at. The number of employees and you look at full time equivalents. Why, why do we have eleven employees and only five and three quarter? Why don't we have more full time people? I'm, I'm not arguing with the numbers, but. That just doesn't seem to make sense.
That one's our, our media technicians, the, the staff that run the meetings. I've been trying to get that out of my, out of my department, but it's, they only work a tenth of, of employee I don't. But that's the, that's where that anomaly is.
But this says we have eleven people, eleven employees.
We, we have a portfolio of guys like Danny over here.
So we have that many?
We have a, we, we use the best one. But we have a portfolio of others.
Does that make sense rather than having more? That was its question, is we have all these part timers.
Should we have a full timer?
Yeah.
Well, we don't spend any more money than we're spending on the, these meetings, so I think. The question would be, would it be better just to show the one part timer if we use Danny all the time and not, and not inflate the budget to make it look like it's more?
So I just looked at that and the question was, wow, shouldn't we have more full time? If this works, I don't care.
I think, I think it works, but it probably shows, it probably, it sounds like it's a little misleading because it looks like the other part time guys are complement positions and we're just not using them right now, so.
Thank you, John. The last is. In terms of. People and where they are and where we're paying for them. You have rearranged Ramona's job. And so Ramona's, Ramona's kind of. That job is now. Over a bunch of things. How, how do you, you, you need to reconcile it some way so I can understand where, where the people are.
The primary functions are still going to be in public works and the budget, you know, she's going to have special, he's going to have special projects along the way that will. Just like Brett does, it kind of gets him out of his world, but the primary functions. Public Works, Public Utilities, Parks and Recreation are still under the Public Works umbrella. So right now, plan will keep in the job there. If, if somehow it started working more towards an admin job, maybe we split it somehow, but.
But, you know, last night you, as you were patting him on the back, you said, and I'm loading you up on special projects.
Mr. Cox, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Ramona, as the department head of Public Works, was carrying a considerable workload within that department. She referenced at her departure, she had big, what was it, fifteen projects that she was running, running porn on. With the changing of that position to a deputy county administrator. Who is going to pick up the slack that she was doing, the work that she was doing within the department? As the department head and also. Doing work as part of being the department head.
Mr. Haggis will pick that, pick those projects up and manage those projects from the man, from, just like Ramona did. Thank you.
I have questions about the CIP, but that's kind of a separate section, so. I'm, I, I want to come back when we talk about CIP, but I'm through with questions about the budget per se. Okay. Anyone else on budget questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a question, kind of a general question for the board. Our personal property tax rate, we haven't changed that in years and years and years. Why do we not ever look at that?
Good question. And, and we're guilty as everybody else. It seems to be a rate that, that people hang on to for a long period of time and it does not get addressed on year to year basis. We're at three sixty.
Right.
Our competition is. I think, I'm not sure, Mr. Timberlake, Chesterfield at three sixty? I can't remember. And Raco's three fifty. But so, but it's, it's, you're right, it is a, a rate that seems to be ignored annually by localities of Virginia. And, you know, they, they hang with that rate, you know, we can look at that.
And that's what I'm suggesting, if the cost of vehicles is going up substantially. Why don't we look at adjusting our personal property tax rate? I mean, I don't know if the board would.
I'm all for cutting taxes. Let's go forward.
We'll have a chance to give you some numbers on that before the eighteenth. Mr. Timberlake's been running our, our new book. That'll show us exactly where we think our new billings will be and give you a feel for what the impact of a three fifty would be versus a three sixty.
And, and one answer to your question, Mr. Carmack, is that. The effectiveness of a penny on personal property is so minute.
Okay.
Compared to. Real estate. So when you talk about a penny in real estate, we're somewhere in the mid four fifty.
Yeah.
When you talk about a penny on personal property, you're talking probably less than thirty thousand dollars.
So that actually would be.
Yeah, I mean, if you go a full dime, then you get into the hundred and eighty or, yeah.
So county budget wise, you're, I think you're better off to, if I'm understanding this correctly. The personal property rate, if you adjust that, that has less of an impact on the county budget as opposed to the real estate tax rate.
Correct.
So.
Oh, well, are you referring to, obviously a penny in personal property would be three sixty, three fifty nine, but if you went legitimately like three sixty to three fifty.
Right.
That's, that's still going to be less than a penny in real estate, I believe, but.
It'll be only a quarter of a penny.
So my point being is why don't we even look at going, just a thought, less than three fifty, go to three forty. Be more aggressive regionally as far as that goes.
And I'm not against that.
I'll, I'll, I'm going there, don't worry. I'm going there right now.
Okay.
You know. And this is maybe a little bit. Out of the, what we maybe could have got into last night with the tax rate, but my question today. In trying to find information, and I know we need some time, but we have a little bit of time that we can figure this out. I had a couple of points that I, I talked to Mr. Smith with, and he, of course, talked to Mr. Timberlake. From that point. What my suggestions were, or at least points of conversation was. If we take. The. Personal property tax on an automobile in this county. And let's say you're at a fifteen hundred dollar value. On your car. Property tax wise, your assessed or, or value that's assigned to that. And let's make that totally tax exempt to where citizens don't pay that. Right now. You get, if you're a citizen in the county with cars and they're valued at a thousand dollars, you're exempt. If we increase that number to fifteen hundred, I think the number that I was told to date, that'll affect forty five hundred people in this county.
Hundred vehicles.
Forty five hundred vehicles. Vehicles in this county that would be affected by that. And I think that's something worthwhile to consider to reduce. To give the citizens an opportunity to give a little bit more flexibility, put a little more real money right in their pocket that they can, they can do something with. And then the one that seems to get a lot more interest. Is. We charge thirty five dollars license tax. And most people that's been in, I'll say, Virginia for quite some time. They've always, years ago, you had a county sticker that you paid ten dollars for, then you paid fifteen dollars for, and then it went to twenty dollars. Then they, they stopped giving you the stickers to put on your car and the windshield, and let's just charge you the money. And so when you get the tax bill, the property tax bill, there's a fee on there of thirty five dollars. I'm kind of leaning in the direction of, you know, maybe we can make that go away and have a huge effect. With people's pocketbooks, citizens' pocketbooks at that point. And there's some more things I think that, that, that come into play with that because it's a lot more workload on your office, right, Mr. Timberlake? And it would free up a lot of time for employees, which gives us some, maybe an opportunity to go back to the four, like Mr. Cox and Ms. Carmack was talking about. And, and. We give that, that's a true. Savings as opposed to the, you know, a penny or two here or there, you know, in, in regards to how it comes out. In elaborate, it's your expertise, so.
And, and it's uniform, right? Because that thirty five dollars is every vehicle. And everybody that has a vehicle, as opposed to the fifteen hundred, will only be limited to those forty five hundred vehicles. Which is not everybody receiving the money back, so.
And, and I, if my memory's right, and from the conversations that I had with Mr. Smith, it's approximately. One point one five million dollars. Less revenue the county would get. The taxpayers can keep that.
Right, so that was a high number we.
We're close.
Estimated that earlier. We've narrowed that down, which is why I was late to this meeting. I was with Keystone. It's probably closer to one point three.
Okay.
We'll know exactly what that number is for Powhatan sometime tomorrow.
Okay.
When I work with them.
And I, I mean, to me, I, I just think that's a great opportunity to help the citizens in a real cash moment. I mean, they don't have to pay that thirty five dollars. And there's lots of cars in this county.
I, I agree, and that is a very quick software change.
Yep.
That can be done mass as opposed to the fifteen hundred on the forty five hundred vehicles. Will be an individual thing that has to happen to each one. So there's forty five hundred transactions as opposed to one.
And I don't know of anybody in the, in the area. That has waived or eliminated their license. Fee.
So in the state, it's becoming popular, there's, the, I'd have to check our actual region, but I know there was at least five that did it in the last two years.
Yeah.
In the state.
Out of a hundred plus localities, yeah. The.
One correction on your language, though, you called it a tax.
Yeah.
And I agree with you, which is why it's illegal, but in code it's a fee, which is how we get away with it.
Right.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not your normal politician. Where we are, but you know what I'm talking, I think the people in the audience and, and citizens watching know. That's a, a, a direct impact to their pocketbook. And if they have multiple cars, which I think many people in this county have multiple cars, it's thirty five dollars per car.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
I believe Mrs. Carmack can validate this. At our last TPO meeting, Jim Holland came to our meeting and announced that they had just passed. Their budget. And he was very pleased to report that they got rid of their license fee. So that's, that's one right next door. And. Let me say this. I'm in favor of doing it. Okay. I want a number if we're talking about. The license fee being equal to, you think, Mr. Timberlake, is one point three billion is what it's going to be?
Yes.
Okay. As you know, I've not been in favor of the seventy nine cent tax rate. I'm, I'm for doing both. I'm perfectly comfortable going after reducing the tax rate and doing personal property, and that's something that was done in Henrico and Chesterfield County. So. We have the money and I think we're going to be able to bring that forward and show we can actually do both things. So I'm going to support your idea about getting rid of this, you know. License fee or whatever you want to call it. Because I think that would make a lot of people happy.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Cox.
I like the idea of doubling down. I think that puts us in the best possible position. I want to see some numbers on when, when Mr. Timberlake has a chance to run his book in terms of what it actually is. If it turned out to be five million bucks, we would have, we'd have to rethink this a bit. But if, if the number he's talking about, I think we have a wonderful opportunity, as you put it, to make a real impact on the citizen's pocketbook, okay? In two very distinctive ways, so. Let's, let's, let's get the numbers. I'm excited. You can help us with that, Mr. Timberlake?
Yes.
When can we get the numbers?
I was hoping to have them today, which is why we worked late, but we just couldn't get through it. I foresee tomorrow, maybe Thursday at the latest.
Okay, well, Mr. Timberlake, you've got the numbers on the million three. You're looking for the numbers on the increased personal property billings.
So we're looking at, we're looking at all of it. We have to play with the PPTR ratio, that's a separate calculation. I mean, there, there's multiple, multiple inputs. But we are finished the hard data input into the system, so now it's just the new software. But we are finished the hard data input into the system, so now it's just the new software with me and then being comfortable with where it puts us for land, for a real, or a personal property book.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, so we're still, are we still gonna look at reducing the personal property rate as well as the licensing? I mean, the licensing, so, yeah, I would still like to look at that.
Yeah, I think we need to look at all of the options that's out there, I mean, I don't think we need to limit it, I mean, it's, it's, as, as citizens have said tonight, yes, it's a big decision, you know, let's, let's make sure we do the best we can to look out for the citizens into this county and their funds and their money.
And, and I'm not against that at all. I would have liked to have talked about that in February when I sent you that email, because that will put us in more of a crunch.
It didn't hit my brain in February.
But that, that's, this year, that would be very hard. That's the way I wanna put it, for lowering the tax rate. The vehicle license fee is a, literally a parameter that we can deal with, but I think the person, the actual rate would be harder for us to handle this year. Because it affects the PPTRA and all those other calculations, that's the part. I wish it was just a parameter that we could change three point six to three point five or three point four, but it doesn't. It affects a much larger calculation that we have to deal with.
Mr. Timberlake, let me ask you a question. And I get what you're saying, in, in regards to Ms. Carmack's reducing that rate of three dollars and sixty cents is a little bit more involved than the hit the button and we can get rid of that thirty five dollar license.
Correct.
But can we make an adjustment? I, I'm guessing that we can, can we make an adjustment after June? This, we're talking about a, you know, a June billing that's coming up, but if, can we get to the December, November billing? And have enough time to adequately do what Ms. Carmack is talking about in that billing? Or does that push it? We need, just need to go to the next calendar year?
So I wanna bring Mr. Laxton into the conversation, but I believe the answer is no.
Okay.
The only way that you can do that is with a rebate.
Okay.
So let's say after the bill and all have gone out, you're then actually issuing a rebate on something, you're not changing the tax rate. But after I've finished the land, the land book and the, and the personal property book and turned them over to the treasurer, I don't think you can go back and change it in that calendar year.
I think, I think that's right, I can double check, but I think that's right.
But the way some other localities are doing that right now, because they, they were late in their budget cycles, they're doing rebates. So there is a way to do what you want to do, it's just not actually changing the tax rate.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Smith.
I wouldn't be doing my job if I did not at least give you a magnitude update. You know, the one point three million on license fee plus the two, if it's two cents real estate tax, it's about two point three million combined. So that over a ten year period is at least a twenty three million dollar hit on a projected twenty five million dollar fund balance. So it, that's, step one would be the tax reduction, step two would be how in the world do we provide services at that level?
It's a good, good point, good topic to bring up, because we were, Mr. Williams is the promoter of the ten year CIP, and I think that was, we all agreed that that was a smart thing to do, you know, to, to project out. When you make these type of changes, you're not making that change for today because you have to do a little planning. And when you make that change, it affects it all the way through. And it's not something that when we take a million three, it's today. It's the next ten years, so it's a million three each year. So you're talking about ten million, eleven million. And the same thing would apply to your tax rate. When you start cutting your tax rate, your effect is gonna be lingering unless you start going up and down with it, up and down with it, up and down with it. Which, I don't, I mean, everybody knows where I'm at on that tax rate thing, I've been pretty, pretty open with that. But it does affect it over the whole period of time. And when you get into a two penny tax cut and you do a license fee, you're getting into twenty three million dollars over the next.
Over the next ten years. Approximately, and Mr. Timberlake brought up a good point, and, and you have too, that we do expect personal property to be higher because of the pricing right now, so we've got an offset that's gonna help our budget offset to twenty three million.
Right, well, I know from my experience, you know, the, the car market is hot. And, and the values are up tremendously. I don't think I'm getting too far off at thirty seven, thirty eight percent, maybe even a little bit more. And the, the, that's probably where I think most people in this county are gonna say, oh, my gosh, when they get that bill. They're, they're gonna, that's when it's really gonna wake up. More so than the real estate tax rate, I mean, most people in the real estate tax rate, you know, it's in their, in their mortgage, and, you know, you have the elderly people, which we did take in, we doubled the credit for the elderly on the real estate and took that from eight hundred up to sixteen hundred, which I think is another big benefit to the citizens of the county. But it's a good point, Mr. Smith. It's twenty three million over the next ten years, and our ten year CIP sort of blows it out the water. Well, all the work we did last year sort of takes it and throws it in the back, start over.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Obviously, you take a hit, I don't know that I'll sign on to twenty three million just yet. But in reality, it's not necessarily cutting the services. Mr. Smith, it is changing the CIP in a dramatic way. That doesn't, that doesn't stop us from giving raises, that doesn't stop us from moving on, but it does mean the CIP and the Pago program would look very different, and that's something, that's something we need to look at. But in terms of the actual services to the, to the citizens? No. We still have the money to pay for that.
Yes, sir.
But.
I consider CIP services too, so.
Well.
But, yeah, I agree, I understand.
Yeah, if we're gonna build that.
We're gonna talk about CIP.
If we're gonna build that three hundred thousand dollar bathroom and concession stand over here on the softball field, that's probably a service. But it's a very good point that you bring up.
But when we get some, some real numbers, we could, you know, we could do something, throw darts.
Yeah, I think it's, it's something that we, we definitely have to, you know, evaluate and look at and see, you know, what's the best thing moving forward.
We've got to move pretty quickly in the next ten, next fourteen days because we've got billings to do, so it's, we've gotta.
That's, that's the tax rate, that's not the budget.
Well, just in general, for, for to get the bills, the tax bills in the mail, we've gotta make, make some quick decisions. And so, and that's so, in the next two weeks, let's stay busy and get information back and forth between us, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. McClung.
I'm new to the budget, but I like everything I hear, so.
Okay.
I like all the ideas, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
Can we talk about the raises? Would that be something the board would like to discuss? Are we doing the five percent raise, the three percent raise? It's a pretty significant portion of the budget, and I think it, you know, we probably owe it to our employees and schools to address that. Anybody have any thoughts?
I have one question, I'd like to go back to the budget. How are we advertising now? We've got X number of days, county administrator just said to get this done, how are we advertising this?
The tax rate on the eighteenth and the public hearing and also on the budget on the eighteenth.
Are we having to run ads in the paper?
Not on the budget, we've already done that.
Yeah, the ads in the paper were for tonight's public hearing, technically on the eighteenth, all you have scheduled is adoption.
Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
The, the advertising was for tonight's public hearing, technically the eighteenth is just adoption, it won't be another public hearing.
So we don't have to advertise, yeah, okay, that, that was my question.
Wait, wait, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm confused, I thought we had advertised because we got the tax rate calculation wrong, we gotta run that ad, right?
We, we have to run a tax rate ad, yeah.
Okay, we have to run.
Yes.
Okay, so we do have to run that.
Yes. Tax rate.
Tax rate.
Oh, sorry.
Not budget.
Okay, I meant on the tax rate, okay. So my question is, how are we advertising that?
Richmond time dispatched tomorrow and Palatine today, the following Wednesdays.
Well, I think I'm on record, you know, about using time dispatched for Palatine. Don't see how that helps the people in Palatine be informed. But I've taken that stand last time, so that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Chairman, let me get, get a slide up from Mrs. Carmack to help her with her.
Absolutely.
Holly, could you go to the county where it says county budget? And it should be the second item on, for county budget. Ah, there we go.
Thank you.
Here's the contingent fund. This lists all of the things that are happening that are proposed in the proposed budget. This is that mysterious number that works in community development. And this is the composite of what has been proposed for our employees. Five percent raise, six hundred thousand dollars, benefits associated with that raise. The county is proposing to absorb the entire nineteen point one percent health increase. Four hundred thousand dollars for compression, this is talking about the sheriff's deputies and stuff like that. And a increase in VRS, and then Charlotte's always needed contingent. That adds up to a million nine two four, it's a big number. This number and the two million dollars we're giving to the schools are four million dollars of essentially six million dollars in, in increased expenditures. So this is, this and the schools are basically two thirds of what we're spending a whole lot more money on. I'm sorry, Ms. Carmack.
No, that's all right, that's all right. With the, some of this we, we have to pay. So people understood, like, the insurance, benefits associated with the, hmm, the one point nine two percent increase in VRS, that is mandatory, that we have to pay. The insurance increase, that obviously we absorb. Is, let me ask you something, I know it's no mystery where I am on the real estate tax rate at seventy nine cents. If we, I, I, I have a feeling that rate is gonna get lowered. I, I don't know what it's gonna be, if it's gonna be seventy eight, seventy seven, I, I don't know what the, the proposal is. If it's lowered, can we do the five percent raise or would that get cut?
If it's lowered, it obviously depends on where it's lower to, obviously pay as you go CIP is part of the equation.
Right.
Projects that we defer are, are, are cut out completely. The five percent that the school board, excuse me, Department of Education has set aside for the school board for next year would be an easy, would be our first target, but focusing on this year. But, but there would be some changes in the ten year forecast that we, we'd have to make if we, for the tax decrease.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, so the answer is?
The answer is.
Answer is yes, we can do it.
We can do it.
But you're gonna take a dang, your CIP project would probably get bombed.
It's, it's eight hundred thousand, okay, two pennies or, it depends whether it's four, four hundred and fifty, it's eight to nine hundred thousand dollars a year, okay? That comes out of what is essentially surplus money where we have revenues in excess of expenditures. So the money flowing into the CIP is lessened. But it doesn't stop us from being able to pay for this this year at all, not even close.
And I know we agreed upon the three percent raises annually with the ten year forecast, so obviously the five, I mean, I just, I wanna get your all's feelings, I mean, are you all fine with the five percent, or do you wanna stick with the three percent, you know?
My feelings are, you know, we, we, we spent last year a lot of time on this CIP, and we're throwing that out the window, that's what we're doing. So everything that we had as pay as you go, we're now gonna flip because you're gonna have to do things in that over the next ten years that will probably change the, the, it's not probably, it's gonna change to where you have to borrow money. The, the previous board borrowed, I think the number was sixty four and a half million dollars, and, you know, we wanted to get our debt ratio back down to twelve percent and below. And, and they raised it to fifteen, and we've done that, and we made a lot of comments a year ago that, you know, we were gonna do, it's pay as you go, as all the way through, I think, you know, it was seventy million, I think, was the number on the, on the CIP. And we didn't wanna borrow the money, we wanted to pay cash as we go. That's gonna go out the window. We'll, we'll, we'll be into putting some things out that you've got to take them out of the CIP, which I'm guessing that's gonna be some of your pay as you go, because that's your cash you're using.
Yes.
We'll have to, that'll, that'll put us in a borrowing position, maybe not this year, maybe not next year, maybe a third year or fourth year. I mean, I don't know, the crystal ball, I don't do real well with that. If you guys can reflect back to a couple of years ago, I, I didn't do well with the crystal ball.
And we can model that for you, we could show you, when we get to the point where you're, the board is picking and choosing projects that need to be besides with debt or with deletion, we can, we can model what that's gonna do to your budget.
And what it's gonna do to the services. The, the, when I look at that, you know, I, I, it's seven hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars for five percent raises. Am I reading that right, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
So you have seven hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars. You have the insurance increase nineteen point one percent, we already voted, this board voted unanimously to pay that, four hundred and sixty five thousand. Once we pay that, that comes out of the one point nine million. The compression pay, I, I'm a, I've been talking about the compression pay for a long time, and the sheriff's office is one that I instantly go to. And I think that's significant, and quite frankly, I don't have a problem if we raise that number, to be frank with you, to, to be able to get the competitiveness to have good quality people working in this county, doing a good job for the citizens of this county. I don't know that I'm ready to make a commitment one way or another on the three or five percent raises. Probably need to look at some more of this and see how we have, we, we get where we are with whatever we're toying around with, with the, the, the real estate tax rate and these license fee. You know, that's a substantial amount of money, substantial amount, that would be my comment on it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Cox.
Oh, when you're looking at the six hundred and one fifty eight, adding them together, remember over on the, this is expenditures, overall on the revenue side, you've got two hundred and twenty one thousand coming in to offset that.
From the state.
Yep, right, yeah, yeah, I got it. Okay, so that's not the net number.
Yeah. I, I understood.
Interesting. Fascinating discussion. I've been very interested in a seventy seven cent tax rate, which has a cost of about nine hundred thousand. But I got absolutely trumped tonight, no pun intended, by Mr. Barley, who now has a proposal worth one point three million. Okay, so while we were struggling to find nine hundred thousand, now we have an additional one point three on the table, so. This is a good night for the, whatever works out, this is a good night for the taxpayers of Palatine, it's going in their direction. But I just find it interesting that the tax rate is a problem, but significantly more money, according to Mr. Timberlake, coming out of the license fee is not, so, anyway, I think, I think is a, this is a wonderful discussion to be having. We'll see where it goes when we get some real information.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, question. Since it's seemingly that the majority of the board is interested in lowering the tax rate, we have that revenue stabilization fund, which is, we have a fifteen percent policy, and then we have the revenue stabilization fund, which has maybe three point two million in it, am I correct?
Close.
What if we absolved the revenue stabilization fund? Put that money into the fund balance to fund the CIP projects? And could that, if we lowered the tax rate, could that level things out and have it look palatable on your graph?
Sure, sure, right now, we're trying to hit an eighteen percent bogey on our fund balance minimum.
Sure, sure. Right now, we're trying to hit an eighteen percent bogey on our fund balance minimums. And if you take three percent off the top of that, we would certainly be able to hit a question is, is fifteen percent enough? And I would argue that fifteen percent of a county that collects taxes twice a year
Right.
is enough. So that would I would I would think it's your three percent number would could be in play to help us get a forecast that worked.
I'm just I'm just thinking if we want to kind of have the best of all worlds. And I mean, the revenue stabilization fund, I mean, candidly, we had it that county ran for years without a revenue stabilization fund. We put it in first year and
Last year.
Last year and
Twenty.
Twenty twenty. Yeah, first year we were in. I'm just, you know, thinking out loud if that would be if we could kind of have the best of all worlds by maybe perhaps releasing those funds, you know?
It is really not releasing funds.
Yeah, that's right. It's you're right. You're right. It's not. The funds are there.
Is how much we should have.
Yeah.
I guess it's getting changed and so we we're making decisions on a fifteen percent bar instead of eighteen percent bar.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, just something for the board to consider.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Cox. Just remind Mrs. Carmack that's one time money. One time money is gone.
No, I disagree.
Only thing that you're doing is you are adding to it incrementally every year. You're not recreating it every year.
No, what I was what I'm saying or suggesting is we completely absolve it. So that three point two million is then that we absolve the policy.
No, understand that.
Yeah.
It releases the money one time. Okay?
Correct, but the the one time monies is still in your bank for like a collection of taxes.
Releases the measurement tool one for ten years, not just one year. We'll be measured against a fifty percent tool instead of eighty percent tool forever.
Exactly, yeah.
Which goes on the whole entire time for the ten years, right? Is that right?
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely, Mr. Williams.
Mrs. Carmack is saying it's not one time money because we're doing away with it beginning now, going forward, time immemorial. So we wouldn't have the eighteen percent. We would have the fifteen percent.
Exactly.
And therefore it would not be one time money. It would be more money that would be available to go into the capital maintenance reserve fund, offsetting the two pennies on the real estate tax rate.
Yeah, that's
Right.
It's more succinctly than I said.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. I understand that. The only point was this, when I say one time money, I'm not talking about where you can spend it. It's a single infusion. It does not happen again next year.
Correct, but I'm wondering if that can compensate for the long say you want to hold the tax rate at seventy, say that you guys pick the tax rate seventy seven cents and you want to hold the tax rate at seventy seven cents over the next ten years, would that help us keep the model that we had last year?
Sure.
That that's what I'm thinking about. I'm done, Mr. Chair. I think I've asked enough questions.
I agree with Mr. Cox. It's like it's a good dialogue tonight. It is. It is good and I like it a lot. And I appreciate everybody's perspective and opinions and I think you guys have have come to the meeting pretty prepared and good conversation. You know, I'm I I do like the the license fee, making that go away. I don't know if we can get the majority of this board. It seems like maybe we can to do that. It and I I look at that and I'm sitting here thinking, you know, seventy seven cents and that's probably where it'll go if that's what the majority wants to do, you know? But when you go to seventy seven cents, let me put it to you this way. If you have three cars in your yard, you're going to save hundred and five dollars. If you have seventy seven cents from seventy nine, you're going to save seventy dollars on a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home. If you have a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar home and the tax rate goes from seventy nine cents to seventy seven cents, Mr. Palatán and Ms. Palatán citizen, you're going to save seventy dollars. And I know that's a lot. I'm not saying it's not. Seventy dollars is a whole lot to a lot of people. If you go to and by the way, seventy seven cents is a tax increase, just so you know. If you want to go to seventy five cents, the equalized rate at that point, you're going to pay the same thing you paid last year. And when you go to that seventy five cents, you're going to save a hundred and forty dollars a year. And if you get rid of the the license fee and some people have five or six vehicles, they have trailers. I mean, you know, I think that's a good way to have a big impact in our citizens' pocketbook. And I'm not saying we can't do them both. I'm not saying that at all, but I do want everybody to understand if you're going to have a seventy nine cents tax rate and you take it down to seventy seven cents, you you're you're going to save seventy dollars. If it goes all the way down to the equalized rate of seventy five cents, you're going to save a hundred and forty dollars. And if you want to lower your taxes, if that's your perception, if that's what you want to have happen is have lower taxes, you got to go below seventy five cents. That's the reality. I think that, you know, what we've talked about tonight, I think there's some really good ideas that are floating around. And I think if we can get the information and we can have some more dialogue and and look at our ten year CIP, how that works with the graph and all, I think it'll be a an interesting meeting on May the eighteenth. And I do think, just to bring this up and touch on it, me personally, when I hear people saying we're not advertising, we're not putting it out there, I think we're abiding by the law. But I'm one that I'm okay with. Let's put a ad in the paper and tell people about May the eighteenth. You know, what what do you pay for a a display ad in the paper? I think it's a worthwhile thing to do because all five of us up here would definitely agree. We want to see more people in these seats and we want to hear you say what you want to say about what we're doing.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Question. This is going to involve Mr. Lattney. The fee, the vehicle fee, is that an ordinance?
Sort of. Yes, it's in our ordinance, but what state law says is you got to have a public hearing if you raise it. Since we wouldn't be raising it, I I would feel comfortable that we can do that by motion.
So we could do this at any time?
Thirty five dollars. Yes, because state law
This has, I mean, you know, we don't have to, you know, adopt a budget or anything like that to do away with this. Is that is that correct?
Yeah, thirty five you could do anytime.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Cox.
Couple of vignettes. Personal vignettes. The license fee. If you do away with that, two of my cars, that's all I'm paying. They're that old. They're that ragged.
You get that thousand dollar exemption, don't you? You got that thousand dollars.
Absolutely. Okay. The the second
Well, that's seventy dollars in your pocket now.
The second vignette is most people know I have a farm and so I have fuel bills. And so I have four or five gallon gasoline and four diesel that I had to go fill up last Friday. So I have off road diesel to go to Adams or off road diesel would I don't have to pay road taxes on it and ethanol free gasoline. That was a hundred and seventy six dollars. That is double what I was paying last year. Inflation's real. There are no little bites. There are no small dollars as far as I'm concerned. I can afford a hundred and seventy six dollars. It got my attention. It really did. This changes how I have to look at pricing things on my farm. We haven't gone to fertilizers yet. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Thank you for that good comment, Mr. Cox. Anyone else? Okay, not hearing any other comments. We've got our work cut out and we'll get a little information from Mr. Smith and Mr. Timberlake and take charge with that.
It's Barley. I wanted to talk about CIP. When we finish the budget, I wanted to talk about CIP.
I'm glad you brought that back to my attention.
He was ready to roll.
I'm ready to roll. I'm ready to roll. Let's go to the CIP, Mr. Cox.
And I'll I'll go through this quickly.
Take your time.
No, but no, this this is these are my feelings and thoughts. That's what it's about. Okay, if you go to page four. This is for our first responders. And on page eight is the fire rescue training center, which we've got set up for twenty twenty seven.
Tell me the tab number.
Three. Three, I'm sorry, tab tab three. Page eight. Go to page eight. Everybody with me? The this is set up for twenty twenty seven. Probably the item or the the reality of keeping our cost under control is our volunteers. They are worth pure gold. We just saw what it takes to put one shift up, okay, for paid firefighters. And we've done an exceptional job of recruiting them, but we don't have the training facilities here that we need. We're having to go forty miles away. And if you've been to any of their training around the fire centers, it's catch and catch can they're doing a nice job. But we're not we're not keeping our volunteers energized with the type of training that they really deserve. Now, this item is is funded primarily by grant. Okay? Now, Ms. Smithers, I think you're aware that Goochland has a major grant. And they want to partner with us to build one of these.
Okay.
Okay, so they have money. I know Manny Alvarez is very interested in talking with us, their county manager. And so this is something that doesn't have much real cost to us as I think huge benefit. And I don't see any reason to 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 push it out. There's okay, it's cost to the taxpayer is is not much money. So anyway, that's my
Look at that. Yeah, it's a good point. Yeah.
If you could go to page eleven. This is the public work section. And there is no real number. You were handed a land acquisition piece, which is the last piece of this to add a million dollars for commercial real estate development. I've been pretty clear. I don't think this is something that we don't have any demonstrated competencies to pull this off. We don't. Fact is, the very first piece of property that we are looking at has been on the market for thirty years. And it's been on the market for thirty years for a lot of reasons. So this this is this is the kind of wow, why should we do this? We're talking about returning money to the citizens and it's going to impact our CIP. This is precisely the kind of place it should impact. So I'm not in fine. I don't want that in there. That's just me. Now, if you go to page twenty. And on page twenty are the parks and wrecks and in item number twenty nine, Trail Master Plan. Okay. That has a total funding of says a half five hundred thousand and it says a grant of proffer for two hundred and fifty thousand. Do we have that grant in hand or is that something we're applying for?
I have to rely on Mr. Sheridan on that. Freddie, you online? Oh, he is. Okay. Can I get you an answer on that?
Okay, because I mean, I think this is probably as we look forward and trying to understand.
I'm sorry to mean to interrupt you.
Sorry, thank you.
Mr. Sheridan, if you don't mind, on the on the Trail Master Plan, the five hundred thousand dollars that we have, is a grant waiting online waiting for is in line or where is the status of the grant?
I I don't recall a specific grant for that one. Possibly could have been something through Public Works, so we could check with them, but I I don't recall a grant that we've received for that.
We'll have to get back to you on that, Ms. Carmack. Thank you. I think the Trail Master Plan, we we have talked about all kinds of things from sidewalks to to trails or different places. This is something we really need if we're really going to be able to look holistically at the county. And this is the number one item trails that people have said they won't. So if you go to page thirty. This is the utilities projects. And item on page thirty one talks about the Fighting Creek upgrades, seven hundred thousand. We should be doing that in twenty twenty three and use an American family, American Family Rescue Funds for that. That's what they're designed for. We've got the money. While we're waiting, let's spend it now. And then finally, page thirty four, our friends at schools. Let's go to page thirty five. This is the six hundred thousand dollars for the roof. But up in the project description, it says that wow, the roof doesn't need to be replaced in twenty twenty three. It should be good until twenty twenty nine. So if it's good to twenty twenty nine, we don't need to be spending money this year. That's okay, but let's go back to page thirty four. Where it lists all the projects for schools and let's look at twenty twenty three. All of the list. So we have you see the hundred ninety thousand to four hundred sixty eight thousand and seven hundred and fifty thousand.
What page you on?
Thirty four.
Thirty four.
Okay.
The total list of of school projects. Okay. All right, so I understand all of this. Why aren't they using the capital maintenance reserve? They got money just for this. Why aren't we using some of that? I mean, they can't just say, well, we're going to save it.
So we are using a portion of those in the fiscal year twenty three budget. It was the first time we've done that. We we proposed that they use seven hundred ninety nine thousand dollars of the capital maintenance reserve that's in here. So that would be for the preschool classroom, the PLC and the replacement of transportation radio system. Mr. Voe, do you know if there are any other pieces of that? There's three projects that they had that we were that we we were reclassifying as if you use your school capital main reserve.
For the seven seven hundred ninety nine thousand?
Seven ninety nine.
It was the HVAC systems and it was the roof and it was a hundred ninety thousand dollars worth of radio systems. But I don't remember which roof it was. It was it was
So the high school six hundred thousand in the description is actually for for upgrades to their camera system. I just wanted to mention that. It's the camera and their public alert system needs to be replaced throughout the building. That's actually what they're putting in twenty three. Not the the roof is farther out with HVAC altogether because it's rooftop unit.
So the roof is it roof is out. We shouldn't even be talking about
The roof is actually farther out into twenty eight and twenty nine, I believe. I have to. They do a very good description. So the they said it should be replaced in twenty two, however, the replacement has been delayed to twenty eight since they're still. That's the HVAC. And I think the plan, if I'm trying to read, I don't want to if there's rooftop units, I imagine they're doing it all at the same time, but I I know they're talking about HVAC. And actually, twenty thirty, I'm trying to I'm trying to read through this quickly. So the twenty eight projects are for HVAC. The roof is in twenty twenty nine. So the three point five million is their roof, not six hundred thousand. Six hundred is for public learning system, but the to get back to the second question, the seven ninety nine is for the public. The replacement to do transportation radios for their buses. And the two, they were proposing a grant for their preschool classrooms and the and that the match to the grant would be from the, their capital maintenance reserve. And then the HVAC replacements at, let's see which school this is, the Palatán Elementary. They were also going to try to, I think, they, they put their CIP grants for half and matched the other half we proposed for capital maintenance reserve.
I just, I just want to use capital maintenance reserve, I don't want it to sit there just forever.
And I agree with you.
This will cut it in half roughly with this minute, so.
Mr. Chairman, you can roll. Well, I just, I wanted to, I did, I want to make one comment, you know, when, because I'm reading this exactly what you, this is the first time I noticed that in the book. You know, they inspected the roof in 2023. However, the recent inspections project that it could last until 2029. And I hope they check that roof really close if they're listening, because the last roof cost us like $35 million, middle school.
Not the roof, oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah, the roof leaked.
The rebuild, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Check that roof, you know, it's, they're flat and you need to get up there and take care of them and do the maintenance on them. Okay, anyone else? Not hearing anyone else, we'll move on to the public comment period, the second one this evening. If you'd like to come out and address the board, you have three minutes as an individual, five minutes if you're representing a group. Please state your name and address.
Harry Marklin, 3701 Hope Meadow Road in Palatán. Thank you all very much for your work this evening. This is how it should be. It was reassuring to, to all of us, I'm sure, in the audience, the way that the meeting went tonight. It was a very informative. Mr. Barley, your idea with the personal property tax, I think, is, is spot on. But you may even want to look further down the road and make it for cars $5,000. It affects all the people that are lesser income folks, that aren't driving around in a big fancy Lexus.
Thanks, sir.
Stevie Brown, 3492 Richards Run, Palatán, Virginia. Had to give a really, Joe, and I was glad to see y'all start digging into it, looking into things. Any tax cut you can do, I don't care if it's a sales tax, whatever, please do it. I'd agree with Mr. Cox on one thing especially, this million dollars we're talking about to acquire commercial land up and down 60. I beg y'all, please don't get into the real estate business. Most of the land setting out there is not selling for a reason, hasn't sold for years. It's setting that for a reason. If they commercial or industrial real estate, people can't get it sold and do something with it, I'd be very surprised if we could do something with it. That's a million dollars, I think that would save us, I don't know, a penny or two, maybe, I'm not as actual as that figures on real estate taxes. I agree, at $35, getting away with that, that'd be great. Anything we can cut is wonderful. Just please, as I keep saying, it's like a broken record, look for what you can cut. There are things to be cut, so please look at that. Like, I'm glad to see y'all doing what y'all doing tonight, I hope it continues. And hopefully the 18th, we can get everything done for this county and move forward. Thank you very much for the night.
Thank you, sir.
I know that feeling.
Just these oils. Mike Oliver, 43723 Bridge Road, Palatán. I, I appreciate the conversation I, I was to hear. I, I just want to put my usual plug in, since my wife's not here, do it for me. For the senior center, I, I think that still is an important item to take a look at as a board, as part of the CIP. I know there needs to be conversations about how to best utilize that, what, what that really looks like in the best sort of way. But I, I'd look forward to a continued thoughtful conversation about that project. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we do have one person on Zoom, Mr. Danny Smith, you, you're, you're ready to go when you're ready. Now you're on mute. Mr. Smith, please unmute, we're ready for you. Mr. Smith, if you can hear us, please unmute. His hand might be raised accidentally, so I he is, he is, he has lowered his hands.
Okay, good, good, good. Anyone, anyone else?
We're clear.
Thank you. We'll close the public comment period. County attorney comments?
No comment.
Any administrator comments?
No comments, chairman.
Board comments?